Call to order. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Jeanette Velez couldn't make it to tonight's meeting, so I'll be chairing the meeting tonight. The next thing on our agenda is a motion to approve of the minutes from the regular meeting of November 1st.
Motion to approve?
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Awesome. The next, we don't have any presentations, right? So we will open up the floor for public comments if there is anyone from the audience that would like to stand. You have four minutes. Please state your name and address.
Madam Chair, if I may, while we are waiting for the first person for the public comment, we also have begun tonight, we will have a parent liaison with us every single school committee meeting for translation purposes if anyone in the audience needs translation purposes.
That's awesome. Welcome. All right. Four minutes. Go ahead.
My name is Jose Agustin Metta Saldana. I live in 73 Essex Street. And I'm here to reach out to you all. I really need help. The Neighborhood Developers is a local nonprofit, and we're hosting a parent leadership training institute. It's going to be, it's not a parenting class. Parents who attend are not going to learn how to nurture their kids or raise them, but instead they're going to be equipped with the tools to advocate for a better future for them. In the first part of the courses, they're going to, parents are going to discuss with each other what's the role of a parent in the community. During the second phase, they're going to talk a little bit more about how change happens at the city level, starting from local all the way to state and federal. So the reason why I'm here today, and I have more information about the curriculum both in English and Spanish, is for your help finding parents who are ready to take that leadership step. And really, parents that are looking to become better advocates for themselves, but also for their children. And I'm talking about parents, but also these courses for caregivers, also grandparents, or anybody who is interested in the well-being of our Chelsea youth. So I have some information. If you guys are interested, I'll give it to you all, hopefully. And I really look forward to working with you to really identify parents and really activate and engage and empower parents to be more involved in our community.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience? Thank you, Jose. Seeing then, we will close the public section, the public comment section. The next thing on our agenda is a report of the Superintendent of Schools.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am extremely pleased this evening to talk about some wonderful, wonderful achievements. First and foremost, I want to say congratulations to Manuel Tesh, our student rep. If you don't already know, Manuel is the proud recipient of the Posse Scholarship at Chelsea High School, and so he will be going to Bucknell University next year. And it's a full tuition paid for. So he is going to make Chelsea proud, absolutely. So we are thrilled. We also have some wonderful data to share with you this evening. And so I'm going to ask Assistant Superintendent Sarah Kent to come forward. You know, every, every quarter, every, you know, we talk about the grades at Chelsea High School, and we keep saying we're struggling. We're struggling to improve the number of students who are achieving. And we entered into last year the turnaround grant with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. They gave us $1.1 million, oh, $1.2, I forget now. One, $1.1. And, you know, we've been waiting. We know what the systems that have been put into place, we know the work of Priti Johari, Sarah Kent, and the whole coordinator team. We know this work is the right work, and we know it's positive, and we have been waiting to be able to prove it. We weren't able to prove it last year. You're going to see some data here this evening that will show you that we are starting to see that tipping point of improvement. And, and at the same time, I think it certainly will be something that you can look at moving forward and start to see that these leading indicators are going to help us and help us towards that, what they call the lagging indicator with the summative score in the M-CAS. So we're very excited. At the same time, I have told my, my staff, I will, I'm not jumping for joy completely yet. I told them I need to see two consecutive quarters of this type of data. So Ms. Kent, I will hand it over to you.
Great. Yes, it's with great pleasure that I present to you tonight. Tonight, we're going to talk about both the monthly and the quarterly data, as well as the appendix, which has the mobility and grade data that we always do. So if we could start on page three with attendance, you can see that grades one through seven are hitting our target. Pre-K, oh, sorry, grade eight and kindergarten are very close, and pre-K and nine through 12, we are still working to improve. We are 1.4% off from our overall goal as a district, and we're working hard to improve that attendance. If you could turn to page four, we can start looking at quarterly grades. So when we look at indicator four, which is grade four students, we are, as you look at quarter one's grades, you'll see that they appear low. They are. However, they are improvement from quarter one last year. In reading, writing, and math, there's a 9, 11, and 4% improvement from where we were in quarter one last year. So we have a long way to go, but the needle is moving in the correct direction. If you could turn to page five, you'll see the middle school grade eight students. Again, in writing and in science, we have improved against last year by four and eight points. ELA and math have stayed pretty constant from the quarter one grades last year. The grades that you're seeing in the column is the final grades of there. So I'm just comparing quarter one to quarter one.
So you're seeing quarter one, but what you have there from the previous two years is actually after four quarters?
Right. So I'm just quoting to you how we were in quarter one. If you could turn to page six. Page six talks about our dropout rate. We have, we currently have 30 children who have dropped out. That's an additional 17 children during the month of November. Thirty is four less children than last year at this time. And actually, where we're seeing the biggest decrease is in the regular education students. You can see at the bottom chart that there are currently seven regular education students who have dropped out. Last year at this time, there had been 15. So we have cut that in half. We are still working hard on the L students in order to impact their dropout rates. On the next page are the details of who those 17 students were. Three have moved to an adult education program. 14, we are gone to location unknown. And as you can see, 10 were English learners. The grades that were most impacted were grades 10 and 11, and we also had some kids in grade 12. If you could turn all the way to page nine, mobility. Overall, this month in the district, we lost 30 children. You know, 30 more children left than came, I should say. But it was about 115 students either came or went, but the net result of that is we lost 30. Overall, this year, we have had 754 students either come or go, and we are actually ahead 56 students from where we started. If you could move to page 10. This is what Dr. Bork was referencing. These are the quarter one grades from CHS for ninth and 10th graders. You can see, as you, as you look from the left, those are final grades from 2016, 17, and final grades from 2017, 18. And you can see that our quarter one grades in grade nine are 24% less than the final grades from last year. They are also 22% less than where we were last year first quarter. So a full one-fifth has been reduced. Also, excitingly, last year at this time, we had 58 children who were failing three or four courses. This year, we only have 23. So we have cut the students that are failing drastically more in half. Similarly, in grade 10, the amount from the final grades last year is 12 and a half. From first quarter last year, it's 13%, about the same. But, I mean, we've gone down 13 or 12%. But again, last year, in quarter one, we had 50 children who were failing either three or four courses. We now have 19. So we have more than cut that in half. And you need to remember that these 10th graders are those final grades from ninth grade last year. The same cohort of kids. So at the end of last year, 52.6% of ninth graders were failing a course. Now it's 32.4 that they're, now that they're in 10th grade. Does anyone have questions? Ms. Roski?
Overall, the high school, are we down? I think Dr. Bork said we might be, have 300 kids less this year in the schools than last year.
We have about 300 less kids throughout the district.
Throughout the district?
Throughout the district, yes.
Some are at the high school, but not exclusively the high school.
Do, you know, do you have a number of the difference of?
Well, don't. We can look in the attendance.
I mean, you can look at the Chelsea, yeah, we can look at the attendance. Chelsea High School is down, but 55 of them are actually just transferred to Chelsea Opportunity Academy. And then Chelsea High School is probably about 100 down, maybe, at this point. We're, we're, we are decreased, and I was going to talk about that in my enrollment report, because we have to pay attention to that with budget coming. But we're looking at a decrease probably of about 300 across the district. At the same time, what I'm going to point out in my enrollment report is that there is an increase of the number of students who are outplaced in special ed, and that's a very expensive drain, even though that's what we need to do for our students. So it's, when I talk about the fact that we have a complex student population with complex needs, that includes our special ed population, especially those special ed students who need a more restrictive environment.
I just have one, because I thought there was 300 kids, and I figured that that might have been a different.
Oh, about the grades?
Why do you think there's such a dramatic change?
So I think it's a confluence of a lot of wonderful, a lot of factors and a lot of work. We have, over the last year, in two summers, but the whole last year and leading into this year, done a lot of curriculum work, aligning our curriculum to the frameworks and working on implementation and supporting teachers in that implementation. We also, I think, the benefits of our new schedule that the grant allowed us to have has really helped, having those 80-minute blocks and seeing children every day in those core classes. So we had a block schedule where we were alternating days. Now it's every day, you see that teacher, those relationships are being built between adults and students, as well as just the curriculum continuing every day has really helped. I think of that block schedule and it increased time.
It's also too, first of all, it's, it's, it's a great deal of good, solid instructional leadership and, and strong leadership. And sometimes that doesn't go over well with people who don't want strong leadership, but strong leadership is what's making it work. And at the same time, it's, Manuel has benefited from it. Julio has benefited from it most recently. And so, you know, we have strong leadership in our coaches, in our teachers, in the principal, you know, the former principal, Principal Johari, who was there for six years of move, or five years of moving this into place. And now it's been transferred over to another strong leader in terms of Mr. Matthews, and his job is to keep this moving forward and keep this going. And strong leadership in terms of Ms. Kent, Mrs. Kent, and, you know, certainly the coordinators, the directors. We need to cherish and value the leadership in our school district because they're working extremely hard with a complex student population, and we're starting to see the needle move. And we're getting a whole lot of credit and applause from the State Department of Education. They come to us. They keep saying, right now, is it Fitchburg and Framingham? They all have turnaround grants, and they keep saying, you need to go to Chelsea High School and see how it's supposed to be done. So.
I'd like to address this question to the superintendent. I hope it's the right place for this, but I know what, noticing our demographics, that we have 54% of our population are Hispanic. Are we doing everything in our power to hire Hispanic teachers? The reason why I ask is that I spoke to a group of Chelsea High kids, and they had concern, they don't think there's enough Hispanic teachers up there. So I don't know if that's fact or if we do everything in our power to hire Hispanic teachers, if they're qualified. Am I right?
I will tell you, it is a fact that we do not have enough Hispanic teachers up there, and we don't have enough teachers, not just Hispanic, but also, you know, bilingual, right? And so you can be Hispanic and not speak Spanish. And so certainly, we want the most highly qualified teachers, first and foremost. Secondly, we want our teachers to reflect our demographics, and we want our teachers and our educators to reflect our community. Are we doing everything in our power? Absolutely. We're doing, and I think I've explained this before, we have a long-term strategy and a short-term strategy. Our long-term strategy actually is the education pathway at Chelsea High School and, you know, partnering that with the dual enrollment at Bunker Hill Community College. We're inspiring kids from Chelsea High to go into education, get a head start with the, with the dual, the early college experience, go on to, whether it's Salem State or UMass Boston, and then come back to us and to teach. We want Chelsea students to become Chelsea teachers. And I can, and that resonates with me because that is the story of my life. At the same time, it's very difficult nowadays to get anybody to go into education because the cost of higher education is so high that many people don't go into education because they can't, it's, it's hard to pay back the loans. And then the second reason they don't go into education is because society bullies them, complains about them. You very rarely see an article praising teachers and educators in the newspaper. You very rarely see a political candidate who says, "Our schools are great." No, they say, "Our schools are terrible. Elect me so I can make them better." Every, every single candidate always puts education on their, on their platform.
So I didn't respond to the group of kids because, or students, because I didn't know what the answer was, but I did promise them I would ask that question.
Absolutely.
We're doing everything in our power to.
We're doing everything in our power, and then ask the students, Mr. DePato.
Yeah.
Would you, would you like to become a Chelsea educator? Because Chelsea will, will wrap their arms around you and help you to become one.
Well, he's going to be a teacher.
He's going to be a lawyer and come back to us.
Mr. DePato, can I respond to, three years ago, this was at 0%. And so I'm so proud of the work that our Chelsea Public Schools are doing because three years ago, in that seat, I also asked the very same question, and so I'm very proud of our, of the work that we're doing in the, in the community.
Would you like to tell them what the percentage is?
This is not my question. This is a group of students' questions that the high school wanted to know.
I know, I know. But as an educator myself, and as the, one of the few Latinas in the school that I worked for, it's, it's very hard to be a teacher. The M-CASs are incredibly hard. And so if any students are interested, I can talk to them, too, so you can send them my.
So I'm glad I asked a good question.
You did.
It was a good question. And also, too, Mr. DePato, those demographics in terms of the percentage of the ethnicity and everything else are in our monthly school committee meeting, so it's in your packet, too. You can share that with them.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Kent.
Could we just have a round of applause for Chelsea High School? And I'm sorry that Assistant Superintendent Priti Johari isn't here today. She had a parent-teacher conference for her daughter tonight, so.
We have a bunch of proud Chelsea High graduates here.
Yes, yes. And I do caution them, though, they've got to keep it up. I want to see it in quarter two. All right. Moving on.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the readings.
Second?
I'm sorry.
I'd also like to add, there is a Human Resource Subcommittee minutes from November 1st, which were not originally included, but you can find it at the end of your packet. And so, yeah.
Accept the minutes?
Motion to accept?
Motion.
Great. All right.
All in favor?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next thing on our agenda.
Actually, I need to just finish.
Sorry, go ahead.
So I'm just going to move back to the personnel update. I need to commend to the, to the record enclosure B. We have 11 new hires, 18 resignations, retirements, or terminations, and four promotion and transfers. Also, I am enclosing, I am, sorry, commending to the record enclosure C, the enrollment report. And this is where we can take a look at the numbers. In district, we have 6,078 students. Out of district is 186, for a total of 6,264 students. You can also, at this point, look at, if you look at the enclosure C, you will see the Chelsea High School, Mr. Veronica. So right now, at Chelsea High School, it's 1,330. We were at 1,500, but 55 to 60 of those are actually just transferred over into Chelsea Opportunity Academy. They have, well, here, it's 58 as of this date. So, so we are looking at somewhere around, maybe, you know, 100 down from Chelsea High School, maybe closer to 200. We're looking at 3, 350 across the district. What I want to red flag to everybody is, take a look at the in-district total, 6,078. We were up to 6,400 a few, last year and the year before. Now, what has increased is the outer district, which is the, the higher-cost students, and we don't get the same money. So that is, is right before you. But that 6,078 is of concern as we walk into the budget season. Yes?
They're going to charter schools? Took some of the students, they're going to charter schools?
It definitely could be the charter schools. I also think that the high rents are also an issue that is, is, is going on. There are many students where I've actually, Lynn seems to be very popular with, yeah, yeah, and Julio knows that. But it seems that, Lynn seems to be the place where they're moving to. I have been, and the reason why I know this is, I also get the seniors petition to me to stay in Chelsea High School, even though they move out of Chelsea for their senior year, in order to graduate with their friends and everything else. And I do waive, I waiver the residency requirement for seniors. That's the benchmark, though. Juniors, I can't waive it for, or any other grade level. But I do do it for seniors, and that really came out of my dissertation research, that, you know, the Department of Defense schools do the same thing.
Mary, with the last four or five years, it's an, it's an easy question, I don't know the answer. What is the biggest enrollment that we had in Chelsea? Was it the 6,300 we had a couple of years ago?
No, we were up to 6,800 when we had the surge.
When was that?
2014, 15.
68, okay.
Yeah, yeah. And we, and we still, we are receiving many students from out of the country. I mean, we, we continue to be proudly a gateway city, and I honestly, I never want to lose that, because I think that that's, that's, that's who we are, that's what we do well, you know? We really do. We welcome and we educate, right? Bridge to success. Madam Chair, I'm just going to move on to my updates, my announcements. I remind you that every single week on Friday, Veronica is publishing the superintendent's updates. You know, even if you can't make an event, I really suggest that you take a look at those public, that, that email, because you can click on it and you can see all the wonderful happenings that are going on in each of our schools, and you can stay informed. You also have in your packet the final annual report, that the only difference between this one and the one you received last month is that the financials, the end-of-year financials are included. And school committee chair, Jeanette Velez, and myself, we signed the cover, the cover Announcements on dates, lots of things going on in December. So, December 7th, the Kelly School Winter Concert, this is all online as well, so just go online if you can't capture it, is at 9:00 AM or 6:00 PM. December 11th, the Clark Avenue School is hosting a family game night at 5:30 PM. December 12th, the Sokolowski Winter Concert from 9:30 to 10:30. December 12th also is the Clark Ave Winter Concert at 6:00 PM. December 13th, Kelly School Movie Night at 5:30 PM. December 14th, Chelsea High School Winter Concert at 7:00 PM. December 18th, Berkowitz Winter Concert from 9:30 to 10:30. December 19th, Williams Winter Concert at 6:00 PM. And the Williams is the combination of the Wright Science and Technology Academy and the Brown Middle School. December 20th, the Hooks Winter Concert from 9:30 to 10:30. And December 24th to January 1st, there is no school, it's the winter break. Other things, I want to say thank you to the school committee members and students who have turned out at the multiple meetings. I know it's been a long process. Thank you, Manuel, especially for leading the charge to get the city council to look at the purchase of the protective mat. December 17th, there will be a vote at the city council meeting. The other things, school funding forum, there is going to be a regional school funding forum for Tuesday, January 8th. The location is to be determined, but it is basically being put on simultaneously in the state in three different places, three different regions. One will be the North Region, which is us, north of Boston. There will be Western Mass, and then there will be Southern Massachusetts. It will be four to five school districts in each one of those locations, and it's going to be the tale of four cities or five cities, depending on how many districts you have presenting. And it's going to be a forum where we will be asking city councilors, school committee members from all of these districts, as well as state legislators, to, to, to come and listen to the stories of how hard it is to run school systems with this broken foundation budget, and how much, how harder it is getting day in and day out. So I will have more information as we go forward. I am actually meeting with the urban superintendents tomorrow to do the final plans, and actually the location, the location is to be determined, although I'm hoping to get Chelsea. We'll see how, how much I can influence. But it is, it will be from 6 o'clock to 8 o'clock, and it is an important meeting to be there. In the same week, and I know we hate to have two meetings in the same week, but I did ask for your ideas on the retreat. And, Mr. DePato, I'm going to tell you, I can't pull off a Tuesday because the January 8th is the Tuesday. And unanimously, nobody wanted Saturdays, believe it or not. So, including my staff. So we did settle on Thursday, January 10th, will be the retreat, and we will, we needed to get the answer this week because we've got to push forward with the purchase orders for food and things of that nature. We will have dinner. I think we said it's 5 to 8, Terry, for the retreat. And so the location right now, we will get back to you, I'm thinking it will probably be either at Clark Ave or the band room at the, the middle school complex. And I won't listen to people whispering in my ear. And then finally, just Chelsea athletics updates. We have some, you know, at the end of the, of the first We have some, you know, at the end of the, of the first half, the fall season highlights, the boys soccer, CAC Champions, we're going to put the names in the Chelsea record. The girls soccer, we're All-Stars. We have three girls that we, we have football All-Stars. We have four names, four, four students that we're very proud of, that their names will go into it, into the Chelsea record. The boys cross-country, the CAC League Meet Champions, the All, there are three boys for All-Stars. Girls cross-country, the All-Stars, you, you saw it in the Chelsea record, the interview with Yari Dharas. Volleyball, All-Stars, we have two girls. Middle school cross-country was a huge success. We want, that was a pilot, and we want to, we want to do it again. So we, we really, really liked it, and we want to expand it if we can. And then the winter season begins, began November 26th. We have boys basketball, girls basketball, indoor track, and cheerleading. And certainly, in your packet, I believe we have the schedule, and that will also be on the website, if you lose the hard copy. And Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
For the superintendent. Dr. Burke, can you just, just for the record, can you let us know, what are the other schools that are going to be part of the meeting on January 8th?
At the school districts?
Yeah.
Riviere, Malden, Lawrence, Lowell. I'm just, it's just the northern section?
Oh, yeah, the nor-, okay.
Okay, yeah. And, and I will get more, in Everett, more name, more districts tomorrow. Because we're all meeting to work on it.
All right, thank you.
Yes, that's the first Thursday, which is, I don't have a calendar in front of me. It's 6:30, it's 6:30 on the first Thursday in January. Does someone have a calendar? Fourth, I think it might be the fourth. No, it's the third, okay, third. That's right.
I, I know you're not aware of this, but the Globe and the Herald, anytime a school has All-Stars.
Yep.
They usually print those All-Stars for both schools in those various sports. We just need to send the names in to the Herald Sports Department, Kevi Danny Ventura, and to the Boston Globe. And our students' names will appear as CAC All-Stars in the sports that they play. That would be nice.
Excellent. David Ventura, you said. And, and Ms. Alpert might already know this and might be doing it, but I'll have to double-check. But David Ventura, thank you.
Any other questions from the School Committee members or comments? No? Thank you, Dr. Burke. Alrighty. So up next, we have unfinished business. We don't have any, so we can go ahead and go into new business. School Committee members, there's a lot of grants, so bear with me. So, the first one is Ms. Enriquez moves to accept $10,000 from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for the Safe and Supportive Schools Grant. Explanation, the main priorities for this grant are to ensure that each school creates a safe, positive, healthy, culturally competent, and inclusive whole-school learning environment. It makes effective use of a system for integrating services and aligning initiatives that promote students' behavioral health through one of, one of two grant applicant options. Option one, action planning. Option two, school-based implementation and mentorship. The current $10,000 award is separate and apart from the $10,400 previously accepted by the School Committee for Summer Programming. The grant funds will be used for stipends, contractual services, and to purchase supplies, materials, and other expenses in support of the program. Mass General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 37A, provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call.
And just, Madam Chair, if there are any questions on any of these grants tonight, Monica Lamboy is here to answer questions as well.
Is it possible we can lump these all together? You have to read them?
Anything financial, yeah. Yeah, she, she asked me.
Thanks for being considerate. So, roll call, right, Terry?
On the motion to accept $10,000 from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for the Safe and Supportive Schools Grant, Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez? Ms. Enriquez?
Oh, yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Muronsky?
Yes.
Mr. DePaddo?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative and two absent.
Motion carries. Alrighty, next one. Ms. Enriquez moves to accept $40,000 from the DESI, from DESI for the Curriculum and Assessment Partnership Grant. Explanation, the purpose of this non-competitive state grant program is to fund specific strategic initiatives that will improve Mass, Massachusetts' lowest-achieving schools and districts, and support their continuous cycle of improvement. The grant funds will be used to support the salary of the 5DP Executive Administrator. Mass General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 37A, provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call.
On the motion to accept $40,000 from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for the Curriculum and Assessment Partnership Grant, Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Mr. Muronsky?
Yes.
Mr. DePaddo?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative and two absent.
Motion carries. Alright, next one. Ms. Enriquez moves to accept $28,520 for the Curriculum Audit Grant from the, from DESI. Explanation, the purpose of this federal grant is to support a select group of districts in conducting a 360-degree curriculum audit. DESI is interested in supporting districts as they make decisions about curricular materials, recognizing mounting evidence suggests that providing teachers with access to high-quality, standards-aligned curricular materials can significantly, significantly improve student outcomes. Well-designed curricular activities, sorry. Well-designed curricular materials can refocus teachers' workloads, deepen their pedagogical content knowledge, and increase coherence within and across grades, and ensuring curricular materials' quality and alignment to standards cost less, builds more human capacity, and scales more easily than many other interventions in education. The grant funds will be used to contract with the Johns Hopkins Institute for Education Policy to conduct a thorough, a thorough review of the English language learner's curriculum for grades 5 through 12, and other expenses in support of the program. Mass General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 37A, provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call.
On the motion to accept $28,520 for the Curriculum Audit Grant from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Mr. Muronsky?
Yes.
Mr. DePaddo?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative and two absent, the motion carries.
Motion carries. Next, we have consideration and action to accept $40,000 from DESI for the Mass Grad Promising Practices Grant. The purpose of this federally-funded, non-competitive grant opportunity is to provide supplementary support to school districts with high concentrations of students at risk for not graduating from high school. These students may be accepting or parent expectant or parenting teens, have drug or alcohol addictions, have current or previous contact with the courts or juvenile justice system, be at least one year behind expected grade level for the age of the individual, have limited English proficiency, be a gang member or a former dropout, have higher chronic absenteeism, and/or any other factors that would place students at risk for not graduating. This grant is intended to provide high schools with graduation rates under 67% to better meet the needs of at-risk students by reducing the number of students dropping out of school, and ultimately increasing high school graduation grants, I mean, graduation rates. The grant funds will be used to support stipends, graduation, coaches, and tutors, supplies, materials, transportation, and other expenses in support of the REACH program. Mass General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 37A, provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call.
On the motion to accept $40,000 from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for the Mass Grad Promising Practices Grant, Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Mr. Muronsky?
Yes.
Mr. DePaddo?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative and two absent, the motion carries.
Motion carries. Next one, consideration and action to accept $20,000 from Pharmaceutical Research and Manufacturers of America. Explanation, the purpose of this grant is to develop and implement an opioid abuse prevention program targeted at middle and high school children in the Chelsea community. The grant funds will be used to support parent involvement and professional development, including consultants, and stipends, supplies, materials, and other expenses in support of the program. Mass General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 37A, provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call.
On the motion to accept $20,000 from Pharmaceutical Research and Manufacturers of America, Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Mr. Muronsky?
Yes.
Mr. DePaddo?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative and two absent, the motion carries.
Motion carries. Next, we have consideration and action to accept $250 from the Massachusetts Cultural Council for the Big Yellow School Bus Grant. Explanation, Big Yellow School Bus provides grants in the amount of $250 to help schools meet the transportation costs of educational field trips to nonprofit cultural institutions and activities in the arts, sciences, and humanities across Massachusetts. The grant, the grant funds will be used to support transportation costs for a field trip at the Brown Middle School. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 37A, provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call.
On the motion to accept $250 from the Massachusetts Cultural Council for the Big Yellow School Bus Grant, Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Mr. Muronsky?
Yes.
Mr. DePaddo?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative and two absent, the motion carries.
Motion carries. Next, we have consideration and action to accept $15,400 from the Chelsea Education Fund for the Intergenerational Literacy Project. Explanation, the Chelsea Education Fund has received a donation from the AC, excuse me.
Retschke.
Retschke.
Yeah.
Foundation, in support of the ILP in the amount of $15,000. The foundation was created in 1916 and supports economically disadvantaged individuals and families. An additional donation in the, in the amount of $400 was recently received from Emilio Guzmang, Chelsea resident. The grant funds will be used to support program expenses, such as salaries for evening children, teachers, and Chelsea High School peer tutors. Mass General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 37A, provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call.
On the motion to accept $15,400 from the Chelsea Education Fund for the Intergenerational Literacy Project, Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Mr. Muronsky?
Yes.
Mr. DePaddo?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative and two absent, the motion carries.
Motion carries. Consideration and action to accept $27,000, $27,350. No, did I read that wrong? I'm sorry. $27,350 from the Chelsea Education Fund for the REACH program. Explanation, the Chelsea Education Fund has received donations in support of the REACH program in the, in the amount of $27,350. This includes $11,350 generated by the annual bicycle ride fundraiser, and $16,000 from the CTE Foundation, which is in addition to the $50,000 they have already provided this year. The REACH program works with students at risk of dropping out of school, and these funds will assist the program throughout this fiscal year. The grant funds will be used to support program expenses, including but not limited to stipends, graduation, coaches, and tutors, supplies, materials, transportation, and other costs. Mass General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 37A, provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call.
On the motion to accept $27,350 from the Chelsea Education Fund for the REACH program, Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Mr. Muronsky?
Yes.
Mr. DePaddo?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
That's seven, seven in the affirmative and two absent, the motion carries.
Motion carries. Next, we have motion to support a letter to Chief Samantha DeShomes asking that the Department of Homeland Security explicitly exclude school meals from its proposed rulemaking regarding inadmissibility on public charge grounds, which can affect the issuance of visas, extension of stays, and the change of status for resident aliens.
So, Madam Chair, I'd like Monica Lamboy to actually speak to this letter.
Good evening, I'm Monica Lamboy, Director of Administration and Finance. The federal government currently has a window of opportunity for interested parties to comment on a proposed rule. The window closes on December 10th. The, the rule that it is considering will affect persons that are applying for visas that are already in the United States asking for a change of status or asking for an extension to their stay. And it has a complicated term called inadmissibility of public charge grounds. The federal government is able to deny these petitions based on the fact that persons may request public benefits in the future. And they're expanding the numbers of aspects, the numbers of services that they would be studying when they're considering whether people should be allowed to enter or stay in the United States. Our food programs at our schools is a public benefit in a way, and we are, all we're simply asking here is that it be explicit that receiving school lunches and breakfast is not a factor that would be considered during this process. There's a lot of concern across the country right now about what this proposed rule may mean for families who are here or persons who want to join here. And we know that our kids need to be fed, have meals, in order to learn. And so that's what this letter simply says, is we would like specifically for school meals to be excluded explicitly in the rulemaking so that there won't be any question on this issue. We're not speaking on any other aspect of the proposed rulemaking.
So just to, so just to, to build on what Monica was saying, Ms. Lamboy was saying, we've talked many times about the economically disadvantaged and the disproportionate count that goes on in Chelsea. Many times because our, our students are new to the country, and they do not qualify for any social service support. When they go to the immigration judges, and they, they go before them, the immigration judge many times will ask now, as part of the determinant as to whether or not they can stay in the country, "Do you accept any public benefits?" And so what has happened is that there is a proposal on the federal level that it expands to a federal benefit, well, our social benefit, whether it's, it's WIC, or Transitional Assistance, or any of those, those pieces. It expands to lunch and breakfast. We offer universal lunch and breakfast. And so we don't want parents telling their children, "Don't eat lunch or breakfast at the school," because we will, you know, we would have to report that when the immigration judge asks us that. And we think that that is not the right thing to do on behalf of our children. So we're asking for support of this letter.
Alrighty. Thank you, Monica. Are there any other questions for Monica? I'm going to go ahead and start reading.
I know it's brought up right now and voted on. And I've always, from day one, I've always had a problem with, with doing stuff like this, you know? I mean, this is, to me, it's an easily, you know, actually, you know, I'm for the kids, so this is a no-brainer. But as far as this, is it possible that we could have, like, in, in the future, like, a little bit more time to, to, you know, I would say, think about it, or read it, and understand it? And I'm not just referring to this, I'm just talking, I'm referring to things down the road. You know? I've always, from day one, you know how I've been, I've, I've asked.
No, you've been very consistent in asking that. And I want you to know that with all good intention, we try to meet that need. But we're also under, we get things last minute. The, you know, the grants that we got tonight are a whole host of grants. We usually don't have that many. I, I was saying to the, the subcommittee earlier, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, we should have been getting these grants in, in, by September. And at this point, we're now getting them in December, which means we're not going to get them up and running now, because the holiday week and everything else, till January. And oh, DESI wants us to do all the work and spend the money by June 30th, and some of them are August 30th. And so the timeline is squished. And so we had to push them through tonight, because we didn't want to wait till a subcommittee and then go to January, then we're going to, we're down to five months. Same thing, you know, we get this information and we get it last minute, and many times it's, no, you have to make, you have to advocate now the timeline for this. The deadline is December tenth. You know, and, and today is the fifth, right, sixth, sixth. So, we do try, Mr. Moransky, but the, the schools in this nation and in this state work on different timelines, and they push down. It's not, it's not similar to a city council. A city council really is just responding to the local government and the local community. School departments respond to the local community, the local government, and the State Department of Education, and the Federal Department of Education, and in this case, the Federal Department of Agriculture, and I can go on and on. We have numerous, numerous bosses in our life, and we do our best, we really do. So I don't want you to think we're doing anything, we're, we're pushing as soon as we can, so.
Thank you. And also, just wanna make a comment in terms of the subcommittee meetings that we are having. I think it is important for us as the school committee members that when there is a meeting, the same day that we had, that we had the whole school committee meeting, regular meeting. That would be nice that every, everyone will come to that meeting, because if we are having that meeting the same day that is gonna be the regular meeting, it's because there is something important to discuss. And today, I, I took upon me to send an email or text message asking some members to come to this meeting tonight, earlier. Because I knew that this situation will happen, like the way that happened last time. That sometimes when we bring something at the last minute, there's always some concern, why we didn't receive this notice before. So pay attention for the future meetings that when something like this happens, if you didn't receive information ahead of time, then, then come to that meeting. Come to the previous meeting before the, the regular meeting, and that way you can feel more confidence making the decisions to vote for something that is important for, for the school committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Enriquez. Any other questions for Monica? Just any, I mean, Ms. Alfaro?
Yeah. Monica, thank you for drafting the support letter on the public charge, because it is really key, not only it's for our children, parents to know that they don't have to, you know, like, disenroll the kids. Been pretty active on this group right now, and at the organization that I work for, we have been collecting a lot of public comments. So if anybody would like to, you know, write their own public comment, feel free to, you know, like, reach out to me. But this is really key, because it's not only about something that is a human right that they entitled to, but it, it means a lot for our parents and for our students to have something so symbolic that we have no power over it, but it is very symbolic for our parents to, you know, at least know that the schools in this, us as a school committee who represent our kids are also in, you know, in support of allowing them to, to have these lunches that are entirely, like I said, a human right. Just the right thing to do. Thank you.
Dear Mr. DeShomes, The City of Chelsea, Massachusetts, has long been a gateway city for new residents entering the U.S. and the Chelsea Public Schools. Has a mission of welcoming and educating all. We understand that the Department of Homeland Security is proposing to change how it determines whether an alien is admissible to the U.S. and whether someone can request an extension of stay or change of status. I'm sorry, team, we are on enclosure F. My apologies for jumping the gun on that one. We would like to respectfully request that the DHS explicitly state that receipt of school breakfast and lunch is excluded from public benefits subject to the proposed rule. We know how critically important breakfast and lunch is to having students ready to learn while they're in the classroom. The Center for Disease Control has found a connection between healthy eating and school achievement, including students with higher grades eat breakfast seven days per week, drink milk, and eat vegetables. At CPS, we provide all students with healthy eating opportunities each school day. We are concerned that if the proposed rulemaking does not explicitly exclude school meals, parents will direct their children to not take school meals. This will be detrimental to student health and learning and to U.S. communities as a whole as food deprivation will be expanded instead of reduced, as should be part of our goals as public officials. Respectfully submitted, Jeanette Bellas, Chairwoman, and Mary. Motion to support? Is that a roll call?
I think you should probably do a roll call.
On the motion to support a letter asking that the Department of Homeland Security explicitly exclude school meals from its proposed rulemaking regarding inadmissibility on public charge grounds. Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Mr. Moransky?
Yes.
Mr. DePato?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative and two absent, the motion carries.
Motion carries.
Madam Chair, I just wanna also, with the, the vote, I am meeting with the Commissioner of Education next week, and this will also be presented to him, so.
Great, thank you for sharing.
Vote for the record.
Alrighty. Yes.
Motion to waive communications?
Okay, next we have, under Communications, we have City Manager's Letter. Do we have a motion to waive the reading of this letter?
Motion. I would like to commend our City Manager for sending that letter to the council, and I know the council's taking very serious consideration, 'cause this transfer will be for the citizens of Chelsea along with their children, and it won't be for this year, hopefully be every graduation year. So I'd like to thank him. I'd also like to thank the superintendent for the effort she's put in to have this become a reality. A hundred and seventy thousand's a lot of money, but I'm pretty sure we're gonna get it.
I think so, too.
While we're talking about thank yous.
Manuel? You have become an outspoken, outspoken spoken. You have been wonderful, and you make me very proud when you go up in front of the council and speak on this issue. You fought for something and you got it done, and we appreciate all the children at the high school that have come forward and brought this to their attention, and I wanna thank you so much for all that you did. You did a lot of work for this. Thank you very much, Manuel.
Thank you. Next, we have the M.I.A.A. letter regarding divisional placement in enclosure H.
Motion to waive.
Motion to waive the reading.
Motion. I'd like to speak on this. The superintendent knows this is a passion in my heart. And I, I read the letter, and I'm kinda disappointed that the letter was referring to boys' basketball, that they would remain in Division One, and that's fine, 'cause they can't compete, they're not gonna win, but they can compete. The thing that upsets me is our girls' volleyball, our girls' soccer, and our girls' basketball. Cannot compete in Division One. If you took our records the last ten years and put up the ads together, you would be astonished, and they put us in a higher division where we can't compete. So I know the rules and regulations like I know the names of my kids. That's how I know this. If we send the letter to the Carmouth Athletic Conference, to Mr. Hayes, he's the president, the football coach, and the A.D., not these folk, saying, "Could you please send a letter to the M.I.A. letting them know, does our girls' softball, does our girls' soccer, does our girls' basketball deserve to be in Division One?", he will send that letter in a minute, because the answer is no, 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 no. And it doesn't affect me, it affects me being on our school board, but it's affecting these kids. These kids can't compete. And it, it's sad that our football program is in Division Eight, and we have five teams in Division One. That doesn't make sense. Anybody at the M.I.A. that wants to take the time to investigate this will rule on our side. Now, they say you have to take the four-year penalty because we missed the cutoff date. That's not the whole truth. The whole truth is, if we send a letter, every sport has a committee made up of A.D.s and principals and coaches. If a letter was sent into those committees, which would be girls' softball, girls' basketball, and girls', uh, girls', uh, soccer, they would agree with us, and they would make the exception. Or do we wanna go the next two years, not having a chance to win a game?
I do know we have sent letters for the girls as well, so I will double-check with Ms. Albert. I believe we did receive, and I think it was in a packet earlier in the, in the fall. We did receive the volleyball one back, I don't think we have received the other ones back. We have also been told, and, and we've been told that we will actually do more damage if we continue to, I guess, I'm, I'm paraphrasing, I don't.
Harass them?
Well, yeah, pester, yeah. So we have been told, you know, that we will actually do more damage to ourselves and our relationships moving forward. So at this point, the coaches have been fine with just leaving it alone for now. But, you know, certainly we will still look into, you know, other options, so.
Yeah. I can go on and on and on. The M.I.A.A. listens to the committees. If a letter doesn't go to the committee, then nothing's gonna get done.
Well, these, we did, we sent two letters, we sent to the individual and we sent to the individual committees. We sent to the head of the committees.
I'm not aware of that, I don't, the only thing I have in front of me is boys' basketball, and they can take the penalty by being stuck.
Right, well, this is the one that we got back, but we sent it to the committee. I can, I can give you the copies of, I actually think I sent them to you by email in the summer, when we did do them.
So, Mrs. Superintendent?
'Cause I knew you were, I knew you were, you were interested in this.
So just for information, and I know you're gonna appreciate this. If the league that we're in, which is the Carmouth Athletic Conference, sends a letter to the M.I.A.A. and says, "They're in our league, they play us, they are not Division One teams." You think the M.I.A. is not gonna listen to them? This is the league that we're in. Of course, they'll take that in consideration.
Well, we'll definitely look into it, that's a.
I would appreciate that.
Yeah, that's a step that we hadn't talked about when we met in my office, so, yeah. When, when we had the whole group in there, so.
That would be great. You know, there are, they have so many policies. As soon as you threaten them with a lawsuit, they back up in a hurry. There are kids that you can't play, and the parent goes and says, "I'm getting a lawyer."
I think there's a lot of threats of lawsuits going around.
They send a letter, and the kid can play. So there you go again.
Mr. Moransky?
I played sports my whole life, I played for Chelsea High School. I'm not comparing the teams back then than they are now. But back then, we used to play Division One, GBL. And then when we went to tournaments, we dropped down to Division Two. Now, we play Division Four, and we go up to Division One. This is, to me, is unacceptable for, for our, our children and our kids here. I mean, we really belong in tournaments in Division Three. 'Cause if we stay in Division One, we have no chance of winning.
So, so, let me, let me make this clear. We are trying to fix it, but we're up against, and Mr. DePato, I know you've been a member of M.I.A. for a very long time, but we are up against a very entrenched organization. And I think you will agree with me that they are entrenched.
I do.
And so we, it has not been for lack of us trying to get them to listen to our pleas, trust me. I signed the letters, you know, and that was your recommendation. I have not heard of the C.I.C. This is a new recommendation which, that we'll take into consideration. However, I also have to balance, we're getting word from Peter Smith and, you know, that we're doing a lot of damage by keeping coming at this and things on that nature. So let me, let me.
So two things, Mary. First of all, we want justice, that's number one. We deserve justice.
Yes.
Number two, we're being penalized because of our enrollment. You get placed in the division because of your enrollment, not how good your program is.
Right.
So our programs, we can't compete because we have a bigger enrollment, they stick us up with the big guys. We can't play with them.
I, I'm hearing you, I hear you, I hear you.
Not fair to our girls.
Well, from, and also too, though, I'm also listening to the coaches, and the coaches, you know, are, are saying, "Listen, we're playing, it's only when we go to the competition level." From my understanding, they're playing comparable teams throughout the whole season. It's only when they get to the end in the competition level. So, and that's when, it, of course, yes, it's very difficult to then win the tournament. But our kids are competing for a whole, it doesn't make it right, I'm not saying it's right, but let's not make it sound like the entire seasons of these sports, that they're playing non-comparable teams. And I think that's what M.I.A. is throwing back at us, right? They're saying, "No, your whole season is fine, it's just the tournament piece."
So, so, Mary, just believe me, I'm gonna shut my mouth after this one. Let me, let me hit you with this one.
Okay.
Chelsea is the only team in the C.I.C. in Division One. There's fifteen teams in the C.I.C., and they're all in two, three, and some are in four. That's an injustice.
It's an injustice. Well, M.I.A.
Yeah.
They're the ones creating the injustice.
Well, I.
We're, we've been petitioning.
I hate to say this, I think that, they think that we have to live with their tolerance, and that's not true. We don't have to live with their tolerance.
Well, that's what we're being told, that we have to live with what they're telling us. They are very entrenched, and from my understanding, they are reorganizing how they do things. I think, I, I'll double-check, but I think it's this spring, so there may be a window of opportunity during that.
Goes by enrollment, we get a higher enrollment, so we're, push yourself.
Yeah, it's gonna go lower.
Yeah, that's how it is.
Alright, thank you.
Oh, I know everyone wants to leave. Go to enclosure E, please, in our packets. Just for the record, even with the clerk that was, our clerk that takes notes, I just wanted to, you know, also say that our comments and our questions aren't here. Well, personally mine, and, and others and the members, I just wanted to know that, why? The comments. I know I see Ms. Hernandez and Ms. Velez, but I think, you know, it should be transparent also for the others who ask questions that, you know, involved us getting a bit more knowledge. I just wanted to put that on the record, because it doesn't, you know, state anything from the questions I asked, the questions that School Committee Man Moransky asked, and just wanted to note that on the record that, you know. Uh, enclosure E. Yeah, which is the minutes of the Chelsea School Committee, Subcommittee of the Whole Meeting. You know, there were a lot of important questions that were brought up that day, and I don't see them. And, yeah.
I don't think questions in general are.
Or even statements as well, I guess. I see one. Ms. Hernandez commented that in the past, she requested copies of administrators. We also, I also brought up statements, again, Mr. Moransky did, and, you know, they're not shown here. Just to revise it, I don't know if they took full notes that night.
You'd have to probably give us more specifics as to what's missing.
Uh, the questions that, and statements that came from, you know.
Are they within the paragraphs at all?
Uh, they're, nothing, no, you know. It's just we had, you know, again, you know, the central office has been very transparent, and we just want to keep this transparency with our residents and the people who, you know, actually wants to take time in knowing what are the, the authority that school committee members do have. That's all for my part, thank you.
But you're still, you still voted to accept the minutes as written?
Yeah, yeah, but that's because, again, we did.
Looking for the future.
Yeah, for the future. Just that, you know, statements, even if some may not be in agree at all, they should still be put in there.
I, I honestly, it was never people agreeing or not agreeing, it was probably on oversight.
I yield my time back to the chair.
Thank you. Alrighty. The last communication is a letter from Chelsea resident Stacy Ameral, professional interpreters, enclosure I. Do I have a motion to waive the reading of this letter?
Motion.
Madam Chair, before the vote, could I just speak on this?
Absolutely.
So Stacy is questioning the, our translation in our schools. And I just want you to know that within the next two months, six weeks or so, I will be submitting a letter back to you, back to her, which I will CC you in a pa, in a future packet in terms of how we do provide translation. And it is, it's, we can always get better, but we do provide translation to our parents. We have a full system in place with positions, with, you know, certainly our parent liaisons, as well as we do provide training for, in particular, translators for special education IEP meetings. And so that training goes on once, you know, once a year for our paraprofessionals who may be taken and used for a translation or our parent liaisons. And we have two positions in the school system. They're actually a dedicated special education translator for, in particular, the high school, because they have a larger caseload. So I will CC you on the, the letter that I respond.
Great, thank you so much, Dr. Burke. Are there any questions, any remaining questions or comments? Oh, my apologies. Do I have a vote to accept the communications? Is it roll call? Or just a single vote?
Nope.
Single vote, great. Can you repeat that again? I'm sorry. Great.
Second?
Second.
All in favor is A.I.?
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Alrighty, and so, any remaining thoughts, questions before we close? Mr. Moronski?
I just want to say, there were two people, one's gonna be retiring, I believe, at the end of December, and one's already retired, that have given a lot of their lives to Chelsea Public Schools. And that is Tina Sullivan, and that is Linda Robinson. I want to thank you for your services. I'm speaking on probably the whole school committee here. We want to thank you for your services for all these years to the kids of Chelsea. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moronski.
I just want to have a quick moment of silence for it. David Lewis, longtime Chelsea resident, I don't know if anyone knew him, but he passed away yesterday. Just a moment of silence for him. David Lewis?
Mr. DePato?
I want to wish the families and the children of Chelsea happy holidays and see you back here in January.
Alright, as we enter the holiday season, I'd like to wish everyone a safe, warm, and restful vacation. And to thank you all, thank you to all of the staff and faculty and teachers that work day in and day out in our, our school system. Meeting adjourned?
Motion to adjourn?
Great. Second? No idea.